Um, my name is James Jackson. General manager to sixty-five, sixty-two, and what does that say? Sixty-two point five, and then sixty-five.
Yeah. I would do it quickly. I just saw a company, you know, five days ago. Well, they were the day change. Five, two, five.
What is it, five, five?
Six, five, two, five, six, five.
Three, four, yeah.
Five. General.
Seven. All right, thank you. With that, I'd welcome to the Skip Back Challenge for Supervisors meeting. All meeting in order, I ask that everyone's good guys and the pleasure of the meetings. I call the Legion to survive the United States of America and to be a republic whose fans honor nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Paul Fox, here. Paul McGinnis, here. Nick Cullen, here. Ben Webb, here. Alice Eastmore, here. Barry Young, here. Joe Coles, Tim Woodrow, and Joe Zado are not present this evening, and myself, Matthew Angelo, and Amber. Here. With that, we'll start the year organization session, and turn it over to our Solicitor, Barry Young.
Thank you. I'm going to be, luckily, the one who's the supervisor, and expect that there are any nominations of the position of chair.
Alan McDonald, President of the Chairman's Chair Board. I'll start again.
And any other nominations? Any nomination called.
Move, call move.
Or is there a decision to the usual?
All right, all right.
No, we don't have a motion.
Thank you very much. With that, I will move forward here. Uh, the motion to elect Paul Fox as Vice Chair.
Make that a motion.
I'll say. Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you for the motion. With that, we move on to our physician appointments. Make a motion to appoint Alice Eastmore as Manager, and Alice Eastmore as Secretary.
How many got a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you. So a motion to appoint Jeremy Kuca as Treasurer. All right, motion?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Assistant Secretary, the appointment of Nana Silver, do I have a motion?
Make that a motion.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
So a motion to appoint Tim Woodrow as zoning officer.
Motion, Treasurer.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you. So a motion to approve Alice Eastmore as the Assistant Zoning Office, as well as the Country Administrator.
Motion, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
So a motion to approve zoning and associates, as well as Alice Eastmore as Code Report Officer.
Make a motion. Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you. So a motion to approve Laura Vincentson as Parks and Recreation.
Make a motion, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Make a motion to approve William Parkin of Republic North Corn.
Make that a motion, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve Joshua Crax as Fire Marshal, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
So a motion to approve Joshua Crax as Emergency Management Coordinator. I'll make a motion, second. Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you. And that will cover the physician appointments. Um, you have that, like you have that? Um, also, uh, moving on to board appointments. We have a vacancy Board Chairperson, one-year terms, firing December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Do I have a motion to appoint Anthony Gucci to that position?
Make a motion, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Zoning Hearing Board, we have a one, five-year terms, firing December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. Do I have a motion to appoint Daniel Fisher to that position?
I'll make a motion, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Park Board, we have two, five-year terms, expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. I'll make a motion to appoint Robert B. Hatch from Dale Tiscus to that board, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Plaid Division, for a two, for two, five-year terms, expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. Do I have a motion to approve the appointment of Luke Vialcy and Howard Gerka?
I'll make that a motion.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
For the lower PVC authority board liaison, is in one, five-year terms, expiring two thousand twenty-eight, do I have a motion to approve Warren Gays?
Make that a motion, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you. For lower PVC authority board liaison, one, five-year terms, expiring two thousand twenty-eight, do I have a motion to approve Warren Gays?
I'll make a motion, second.
And we already did that, sorry. Yes, that's why I was looking at it. Very good. And finally, Resolution twenty-two, dash, zero, one, uh, the appointment of zoning hearing board members, do I have a motion to reappoint those current members?
I'll make a motion, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Moving on to professional appointments. Special counsel for subdivision and land development and zoning matters. Solicitor, do I have a motion to approve the Solicitor Resolution number twenty-two-three, dash, zero, two?
I'll make a motion, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right. Should, should these happen in meetings like that, Barry Young, I mean, should we?
Yeah, uh, yes.
It's not about the resolution, I didn't add it, but it's just about the.
Tell me what you remember, no?
Yeah, yeah, it kind of listed it.
Okay.
So a motion to approve special counsel, Resolution number twenty-two-three, dash, zero, three.
I'll make a motion, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the engineer, Resolution number twenty-two-three, dash, zero, four, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
So a motion to approve the traffic engineer, Resolution number twenty-two-three, dash, zero, five.
Make a motion, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Inspection Service, so a motion to approve for the Inspection Service, Resolution number twenty-two-three, dash, zero, six.
Make that a motion, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
I have a motion to approve the planner, Resolution number twenty-two-three, dash, zero, seven.
Make a motion, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Do I have, uh, motion to approve Bailey, the Honor, for Resolution number twenty-two-three, dash, zero, eight?
Make a motion, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
And finally, I'll make a motion to approve the zoning hearing board solicitors being under Resolution number twenty-two-three, dash, zero, nine, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Moving on to establishments. We'll start with depositories. For depositories, do I have a motion to approve Resolution number twenty-two-three, dash, ten?
I'll make a motion, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Tax rates, do I have a motion to approve the tax rates under Resolution number twenty-two-three, dash, eleven?
I'll make that a motion.
Second, one second. No changes in the tax rate, right?
None of that, yes.
Just want to point that out. You made it to you.
Motion in a second, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Uh, meeting dates, do I have a motion to approve the meeting dates for the board supervisors under Resolution number twenty-two-three, dash, twelve?
I'll make a motion, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Do I have a motion to approve the Administrator holidays under Resolution number twenty-two-three, dash, thirteen?
Make a motion, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
So a motion to approve the fee schedule under Resolution number twenty-two-three, dash, one, four?
Make a motion, second.
Motion in a second, all, all in favor?
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the Code Report Center under Resolution number twenty-two-three, dash, fifteen, Alice Eastmore, do I have a second?
I'll say, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Do I have a motion to approve the managers bond of a hundred thousand?
Make a motion, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Do I have a motion to approve the treasurer's bond of a million dollars?
I'll make a motion, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Do I have a motion to approve the mileage rate of point six-five-five percent or cents per mile?
That's point six-five, not a dollar, that's sixty-five point five cents. Yes, I'm.
Point five.
Not point six-five cents, thirty in the barrel, man. That's sixty-five point five cents. No problem, not gonna get a rest of the speech, but.
Yeah. Let me put it on wrong here.
Sixty-five point five cents.
Yeah. You have that? Do I have a motion?
I'm in motion, this is.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
ESATs. ESATs Convention Delegates and Delegates and Voting Members. Do I have a motion for all supervisors and delegates to appoint all supervisors and delegates, delegates and Nick Cullen as the voting delegate?
I'll make a motion, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Good luck, Barry.
And with that, we can move on to our regular meeting. Under the executive session, this evening we discussed personnel. Public comment, anyone having any thoughts this evening, yes?
Uh, just before moving on, did we, did you cover passion administrator, or was that a line for a reason?
I have one last question.
Do you have another knowledge, sit down, two at the same time?
Uh, because it was the same person.
Yeah, sorry. I'll ask you one more.
Yeah. Anyone else, yes?
Uh, dedicated to supporting inter-traffic, um, regulations under regulations is only in the back here, but here now. Uh, what is the process if you would like to, uh, to be, um, on those permits or, uh, is for organizations, is it something that you just attend meetings and show interest to present an official letter?
So if they're appointed in position, uh, then yes, you would show interest or speak to someone, um, in the office or on board, or send in a letter, or, you know, anything along those lines. Uh, if it's an elected position, then obviously it's a little different, um, someone would run for it, um, and then, um, for example, someone were to not finish their term, then this board can appoint whoever they allow to do that position. For the remainder of the filling, uh.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else, yes?
Um, I just think, one, is there really, can you be more clear on the calendar as to what the meeting pertains to? Last time I was here, it was like a budget meeting, and it was a regular meeting, and a lot of people weren't aware of that at the time, and it seems like today it's like the reord of the meeting and the regular meetings, so can you, is there any part of that on there?
Uh, we may, that is a annual thing that like, there, those two meetings are always that way, the first meeting of the year is normally the first Monday, um, and it's basically the appointments, you know, taking care of in-house business, basically. Um, now, of course, the first Monday is a holiday, so the government's the first Tuesday, um, and then the one, uh, year end is normally the budget workshop prior to the meeting. That wasn't during the meeting, though, that's.
That was before, but.
Before the meeting, correct?
Right, and I, you know, that has certain times, um, so on in the West, I think you said the budget meeting was at seven, and you'd say the regular meeting was at seven-thirty, so I'm still unsure if it was late evening.
But wasn't the regular meetings set, wasn't that out of time?
Yeah, it's on the website.
Yeah, legally, it has to be out of time.
This year, it's already scheduled, it's been postponed one time, and had a meeting scheduled.
Was that?
That was, right?
Right.
You turned it over, sir.
You were looking at it, right? The budget meeting and then all into.
That was just, yeah, I think, yeah.
But it happened. It happened to me.
It's just a suggestion, but maybe we all, and that's how.
No, I'm saying it had to be out of time, we wouldn't have been able to have a meeting had it not been out of time.
It's not in the, like, the calendar, calendar, it's on the board of supervisors or lay-in committee, it's kind of like underneath that with the agenda.
But coincidentally, we're, you know, our website, where things like clarity, we would change.
Is that what you're saying, like, early in the meeting?
It's hard to understand what the meetings are, unless you've been to them for years and years, so more clarity on where you can find things quickly, I think would be beneficial than a more attached, because a lot of setting.
I could be back with a background on the website this year.
Okay, and then I did have a second comment, um, so I asked last year or two meetings ago, um, but I guess it's just a daily first, so if it's a minute, I'll look more deep. So I asked about, um, the stucco, and do you need the stucco deciding? Uh, and I felt like I didn't really get great answers to my questions. Um, my first question is, um, I think the reason that we can't change to siding is because the rest of the names are like a stucco, but the new townhomes do have siding on them, so I love to have some siding, a portion, but I don't really get that clear as to what design I can submit and approve, that's not exactly what my house is now, do I want to change? So my first question, how can you have some siding, but then say there's less siding? So I can see this is that, but that's what I don't clarify on, under on.
Could you go more a space, uh, H O A?
Yeah, man.
So that has to be a pay off with that H O A.
And, and, um, is it T and D or what, is there everything approved or what, give that township?
I remember that, I mean.
Yeah, see, I, I wasn't here for the last meeting, but somebody overruled the H O A?
No, it never came up. It never came up.
I remember the meeting prior to that, going on with the fact that Richie Ann Reed Miller and, uh, what was it, sixty-seven percent?
Yeah.
Uh, sixty-seven percent of the people living there voted for it, then it would be changed, this, this is what we got.
It would be changed for the H O A, I would appreciate that.
And this board did not vote, as long as, as long as sixty-seven, if we had something to write, you can't just come out and say, we're gonna do this, if you bring us what is necessary by the H O A, then I don't know why this board would have voted.
Now, keep in mind, this board can change. There's three people up this year alone.
Right.
Um, so.
Yeah, I guess, that's what you bring, if this current board did not vote.
And what that I did have a follow-up to that, so, um, for the H O A, no sheds were allowed from their original agreement, and there was an ordinance that was signed by a few poll that, you know, there wasn't sixty-seven percent of homeowners in all the H O A that signed something, um, it's an ordinance that had just related state homes.
Because that would obtain to certain homes, not the entire, uh, development, and the H O A as a board should favor that. So, again, we don't like to get involved in home ownership things, uh, as a board supervisors, otherwise we could be involved in, in areas.
Okay, um.
So because that was passed initially for no sheds, um, mainly because of the size of the lots, since you have the T and Ds that are right behind the state homes, and it would have been crazy to have just sheds lined up. So the H O A as a board, um, requested that just be estate homes that had a third and acre, but have a particular shed or two styles, and again, we said if that was the wishes of the board, H O A board, this board would have been opposed to it.
And then, so stating that with that out, outside of theater, if, if the board says only the estate homes, did you want to change the siding?
Now, again, I don't know that, I'm talking about what happened with that particular one, I don't know the legal parameters of that, of course, our special counsel that covers that, Joe Coles is not here this evening, so legally, I can't tell you, um, the specifics as to why the sixty-seven percent of the H O A signing all, is it all built more, just be estates, I, I don't have a answer.
You're a best off, you know, you have.
I, I have, and, and you get a conflicting information, because you stated you have no authority over in the H O A, but then you say Joe Coles had a legal authority.
No, no, Joe Coles is our solicitor, so he would be able to answer the legal question on our behalf.
Okay.
We were even kind enough to let him to, um, who's, who's the H O A?
Bruce, please.
Reeves Miller, to answer questions off of, if he, if he needed it.
Okay, I mean, so it sounds, so it sounds like if I get a sixty-seven percent and for the H O A, and the H O A board finds out on that, that you would also be in the area to have.
That is for.
Okay. And there's, and we don't know the reason why some things are allowed for, some of the homes, and some things are allowed for.
Yeah, I.
In the H O A, right?
In the H O A, I don't remember the.
Well, you know, it's a part, it's a part of laws, it's not. Your declaration deeds of confidence, deeds of. With the act of declaration of design, as a, when you bought the house?
Yeah, when you sign for the house, it was the same thing, and all the, you have T and D, because the, the public information, so we're sure we're satisfied your house.
I'm in a, I'm in a H O A, so.
But they, but I usually got that any changes to this year or your own must be approved by the H O A, give it to the H O A, the H O A give it to the township, the township says no, and that's the house. Just see why you can't fly coming to the township.
The H O A has to, you know, be a part of it, really, it's not that they don't pass it in the law.
Well, that's what a big thing would happen, and we sent it back to them, so, I mean.
I mean, I, I think this is the, they're not behind the H O A, because of the T and D or whatever, so I don't know, you know, I don't. Integrated neighborhood of government, which is a certain type of building, right?
And, and that's how originally it came up to be, um, for example, the properties that are all stuck, so that they match, and we don't have thirty-six different things or different styles, which, um.
You have a thing to the H O A, right?
It is now, yes, you are for.
Okay, but it still needs to, it still needs to go through you, so it's not just the H O A, it's not just the Reeves, Reeves, that's okay, and I did whatever to mass, so those three lines.
Again, my understanding, and I can get, uh, Joe Coles to speak with you personally, um, but my understanding, again, I don't want to speak on legal, legal parameters out of the line, exactly, but my understanding being here, that meeting, which Joe had brought up, the sixty-seven percent, um, of the residents in the H O A signatures, again, if that's the case, and there's nothing else attached to that, which is, again, what I took from that evening, that evening's meeting, I don't know that anyone on this board would have posted.
Okay.
Yeah, this is why Q and A versus common in the work, is we're not prepared to take cold questions on everything, matter, I thought harder because we filed a counter, so they had to raise the H O A first, and then come to the lawsuit, and go to the county, so there's a whole bunch of stuff here, maybe the best thing to do is try to have a meeting between meetings where that's, that's the agenda, and everyone who, you know, invite our participants, everyone knows the content, everyone's prepared, um, make sure that we're moving forward, right?
Yeah, I'm not trying to ask you guys for answers, I was just trying to get answers, and I feel like my answers, like, one, there were probably a couple ones, um, so if you even go in contact with Joe or whoever, um, but, you know, I feel like I asked pretty simple questions, how do I get ordinance to this, you know, the H O A, how do people do I need, what's your role in it, and I don't feel like I get.
And I'm, I'm gonna apologize if something has fallen off there, because the way I left it, not last meeting, but the meeting before that, I thought you left here satisfied, I don't know what you had to do.
I, I left here satisfied that I would be charged with Allison, you know, getting the answers, and then, you know, a couple months later, I feel like, I think I got here quick, um, researched answers, what I only got, and I'm not interested to tell me what I need to do to make this change, because I need to get every person signature that that's what it is, but I don't feel that's clear, I want to talk to her.
I, I apologize, I thought that was maybe clear, that, that evening, by, by Joe, and, um, you can make a note, um, for Joe, as a matter of fact, you'll have a call, Joe and Michelle, and she will have a call, and we're gonna take care of this once and for all.
Yeah, I would agree with that, I'm saying everyone together at the same time, because you have a really question, so only if you want to answer, pointing the person who's not here, that's just a little odd, right? So if the right people are together with the right agenda, and everyone knows, they have, you know, answers to their delay.
That's good, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else this evening? Yes?
Uh, Catherine Sage will want to contribute an essay, um, and just a little bit of suggestion that when you're making your updates to the website, um, it would be helpful that when there are, um, vacant board appointments that are gonna be coming up, um, that would be useful information to have on the website, so that, you know, when the people are interested in being considered for those appointments, um, you know, they even know that there was a vacancy, that they, um, you know, start to register now.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Moving on, I have a motion to approve the December fourteen, twenty, twenty-two minutes.
Okay, can I question?
Okay.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Alice, anything on the board comments?
No, that's not it, thank you.
All right. Moving on to the administrative articles. Do I have a motion to approve the treasurer report, as of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two?
I'll move it.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the interim bills paid on December twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, which include the general fund equalling forty-one thousand, six hundred thirty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents, the sewer fund totaling two thousand, five hundred, twenty-five dollars and eight cents, and open space coming in at eight hundred, seventeen dollars and two cents, as well as bills for payment today, January third, two thousand twenty-three, which include the general fund totaling twenty-two thousand, thirty dollars and twenty-seven cents, sewer fund equalling two thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars, and finally, the open space fund coming in at four thousand, five hundred, fifty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Reports, we have nothing under Tim or Joe Zado's reports this evening, as they are absent. Barry, have you done your Solicitor's report?
Thank you.
Thank you. And Alice, have you done the manager's report?
Um, yes, um, uh, Tim Woodrow's, um, uh, I guess his field person has gone out and thoroughly inspected the goals of the skip pack, to make sure that the work has been completed, um, up to the point where we can release the third Esper payment.
They was satisfied with that again?
Completely.
Okay.
So that's a total of seventy thousand, one hundred thirty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents.
All right, anyone, you have a question?
No, he's got that, just here.
What's that?
Totally no, before passing.
Not your plan enough, or?
All right.
All right, anything else that, uh, else?
That's it.
All right, with that, do I have a motion to approve Esper number three, with the nulls at skip back, forty-four, forty-six, skip back, fighting. All right, with that, do I have a motion to approve Esper under three, the nulls at Skipback, forty-four, forty-six, Skipback, fight.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I see nothing on their old business, anyone having anything on the new business, they like that. With that, thank you for coming out, your turn.